I am.
Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, this is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, December 6, 2022. It's a little past 10 o'clock. We're going to move right into the consent agenda. Melanie?
Approval of payroll November 11th and November 25th, 2022. Approval of claims November 3rd, November 10th, November 17th, November 23rd, and December 1st, 2022. Approval of minutes for November 1st, 2022. Treasurer's monthly report, October 31st, 2022. File. Waits and measures monthly report, October 16th to November 15th, 2022.
Okay. Any comments or questions? I'll move to motions.
The Memorial Opera House is part of the--
Oh yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. We have--
--a venue rental agreement, celebrating the life of Jovanina Wilson. Like to briefly say, she was one of my daughter's closest friends and passed away after about a year-long battle with cancer at 17 years old. So this is, this is one that's near and dear to my heart and glad to be celebrating it with her at the county. She was a fantastic actress.
Thank you. That a motion, Laura?
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and second for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We're going to move into announcements here.
Okay. You don't know too much about this one. Commissioner Good, but I do. So we've got Jeff Good, our commissioner, finishing up his eighth year of service to the county. And, you know, we've all had the trials and tribulations of working with Jeff.
Whatever are you talking about?
It's all been easy peasy, a piece of cake.
I don't know what she's talking about, Jeff.
You know, when Jeff first got here, we talked about all there was to accomplish. And it was a lot. And we, we put a lot of time in. We made some great strides. We have a foundation now. We went from making under a million dollars a year interest on our hospital sale proceeds to up to 15 million in one year. We have done $30 million worth of renovations on this team, which is an incredible amount of time, meeting with all the department heads and picking out colors and making sure all the things get taken care of that I don't know anything about, that Jeff was very good at figuring out. We've just done so much. And, and part of what I really appreciate about his leadership, obviously, you didn't do all those things yourself, but Jeff's leadership empowered other people. We have great people in all the important places. And, you know, he, he made sure, he, he held the bar high. And we had a team that works together and wanted to reach that bar. Our department heads helped each other, sometimes supported each other. But I, I feel like we're, we have a standard of excellence that I hope we can carry into the future. I heard that Barb was here. I don't see her, but welcome aboard to Barb. And I hope that we continue this tradition. And thank you very much for your service. I feel privileged to have worked with you all these years. And we have another elected official who has really put the bar of excellence where it belongs. And I've been with county government since the early 2000s. And I know what Herculean undertaking the auditor's office is. And it's only, it's only increased, the amount of work, the regulations, the reporting. And she makes it seem like it's a piece of cake. She always has a smile on her face. Her staff is excellent. Again, is a great example of fantastic leadership. You don't, the staff doesn't do well if the leader's not solid. So I, I could go on and on about all of the great things that Vicky and her team has accomplished in the eight years she's been here. And I'm sure I'll still have lots of questions. It's been, it's been just a joy to be able to call and get a number and know that's the number. And thank you, Vicky. I know it's a lot of sacrifice. I come here sometimes late because I forgot something and, and half their cars are still here. Always putting in the extra. And thank you for your service, Vicky.
And Laura, you said the magic words. It's really doing my awesome staff. They've been wonderful.
We have a little cake afterwards. If anyone would like to personally thank Jeff and Vicky, we would sure appreciate it. You could stay.
I would just like to take this time to just thank our staff up here who we've worked with. We've put quite a team together. I, I think I've been blessed to have served my eight years, the same eight years that Vicky Urbannick served hers. I think as you're a commissioner, you're in charge of a lot of money up here. And to have someone on the backside, on the accounting side, because in my world, in my other business, in the real world, good accounting really, really does matter. It, it, it's the bedrock of any institution that, that goes forward. And to have it done at the level that it's been done in this county for the last eight years, you know, that's, that's not a red or a blue kind of thing. That's black and white. That's accounting. And I just want to thank you for your class and everything you've done. You've made my job a lot easier up here. And I couldn't think of a better person to sunset with than Vicky Urbannick. So thank you, Vicky. So now what we're going to do is we're going to get on with the business of Porter County here, and we're going to end on a high note. So here we go. Strap on because we're going to go fast. We are now accepting board applications for the following boards. We have Alcohol Beverage Board, one appointment, no political affiliation. Board of Health, three appointments, all Republican affiliation. Convention Recreation Visitor Commission, three appointments, no political affiliation necessary. Plan Commission, one appointment, and that's a Democrat affiliation. We have Peta Bola, which is two appointments, no political affiliation. Redevelopment Commission, three appointments, no political affiliation necessary. And Stormwater Advisory Committee, one appointment, no political affiliation necessary. The deadline for these applications is January 6th. So good luck and get your applications in early. Thank you. We're going to move into new business here. First of all, we have an ordinance. Last meeting, we, we opened these ordinance. So if you see second reading, that means that they've already been opened and discussed in a public environment. First one, we have an ordinance ratifying Porter County's fourth proposed investment of America Rescue Plan Act funds, plan for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2022. This is second reading. I'll throw that to the floor for any discussion or action.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. I'll second it. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, Munich Code. This is an ordinance of Porter County adopting a recodification of the Porter County's code. County code recompiled and edited to bring into compliance with state federal citation and law changes since the last codification in 1997. That's second reading also. Any further discuss, I'll throw it to the board for further discussion or--
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Munich Code. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have a crest, a request for approval by Tim Stoner to continue renting approximately seven acres of county property for farming off of State Road 2. Mr. Stoner has given the county a check in the amount of $3,600 for 2023. I'll throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a request for approval by Tim Stoner to rent county property. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And next up, last up, we have an employee request to be on the retiree insurance starting in April 2023.
Motion to approve.
I'm going to stay off of this one.
Yeah. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, Sheriff Dave Reynolds. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 20-08. This is establishing a non-reverting fund, number 8157, for the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. This is a state homeland grant program awarded through a CFDA 97.067 DHS grant. So this is going to be an ordinance, an amendment of an existing ordinance. And before we get to the public part, is there anything behalf that the sheriff's department wants to sort of recap of this?
This is really just housekeeping on this ordinance. We're changing it. It's been used for bomb equipment in the past. It, it is still technically through Homeland Security and it is for the bomb team, but it's x-ray. So we're just changing it to public safety to kind of open it up a little bit.
So does, does the description of the ordinance broaden itself too then?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions? I don't. Okay. So what we're going to do here is we're going to pause the commissioners' meeting. We're going to open up a public hearing. We're going to give three opportunities for anybody to come forward to speak in favor of this change in ordinance, or we're going to give anybody three opportunities to come forward to speak against the, in favor of this ordinance. So first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance revision? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in, against this ordinance amendment? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this amended ordinance? First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this amended ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Public hearing is now closed. We'll throw it to the floor for comments or action.
Motion to approve on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Second reading will be in the first meeting of January. So we'll post that up for next year. And next up here, we have a request to amend the employee handbook to add double time pay rate for jail officers. I think we have some questions on this one. Is, is, is this something that was approved during the budget hearings with the council? Because I've talked to a couple of council members and they weren't aware of this double time. And it seems to be coming at an odd time after we've already approved budgets.
Right. So we're not asking for any additional money at this time. This is, we would, what we would be using would be unused salaries. And so what the sheriff has intended to do with this is compensate the people not who are scheduled to work holidays or weekends, but who are kind of mandated to work those holidays and weekends to cover shift shortages. This is Captain Ryan Taylor from the jail. He can answer the specific questions to staffing.
Ryan, I got a question. Doesn't that, wouldn't that in some ways, you're saying you're using the double it? You're using the unused salaries of, of what is currently open over there? Merit positions?
Jail positions.
Jail positions.
So they're, the unused salaries are from the open positions that aren't being filled or in the, in the turnover there. I believe this year we're carrying over about $100,000 of unused salaries. So throughout the year, we have a budget of overtime and we, we do add to that because we exceed that through unused salaries and there's still 100,000 going back.
Okay.
So it would just be--
Yeah, I understand what, I understand what you'd like to do, but isn't that in some ways handcuffing, no pun intended, handcuffing you to move forward when you go to fill those new positions? Now we're, you know, now we're locked into these, these hourly rates.
So it, it wouldn't be an always thing. What they're hoping to do is just use it in specific instances when, when it's mandated. We won't always--
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a legitimate request, but ask, I mean, the other two commissioners speak for themselves. That's really a question. It should, that question should start out with the, the fiscal body of county government, the county council.
Okay.
And then brought to us if they approve it.
Okay.
Okay.
We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think also too, the, the amendment to the handbook hasn't been written yet. So what, what my concern is, is that these things always start off in HR up here and you put some broad termination or thing in, in, in the employee handbook. And next thing you know, it's interpreted 15 different ways from Sunday. And that's what we're trying to get away from up here. So we're also moving into double pay, which I think right now we're only time and a half, right?
Right.
So that's, I think, a question that Commissioner Biggs is reserving to. Now you're adding for more money, which is really a county council type function. So I think from our perspective, I think we, we want to have it wrapped up with the cherry on top. And I think from my perspective, I don't feel comfortable moving this forward without reading the amendment to that actual handbook. What does that amendment say? And if we can lock it up and we can get it tied tight to where everybody's in agreement, then we move on.
And I, and I think it's only appropriate, given where we are this year, the time of the year, and we've just gone, we've elected a new sheriff. Is, is, I think the new sheriff should weigh in on this as well.
Okay.
Given that opportunity.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. No action taken. Yep, thank you. Next up, Auditor Vicky Urbannick. She's got a lot here.
So commissioners, in keeping with what has happened in the past few meetings, before you are some agreements spelling out the terms and conditions of external parties, in other words, non-county agencies, that will be sharing some of the county's SLFRF ARPA award. As you'll see, it's a very long list. So Commissioner Good, you have a lot of signing to do. This is really the culmination of some very intense past few weeks in the auditor's office. Our team, our SLFRF team, which is made up of Tony Downing, Tiffany Johnson, and myself have been working with primarily all of these nonprofits to put together their agreements. Just about every single one involved conversations with the nonprofits to determine how are we going to be releasing their funds and what kind of documentation we need. Again, I'll emphasize, every single penny of these dollars must be monitored and tracked. And that's part of the purpose of these written agreements. So with your approval, we will have the framework in place to start distributing these funds after obtaining the proper documentation.
And you've, you've spoken to each individual organization on this list?
You have agreements, right?
Yes.
You have agreements from all of them.
With just about everyone, either directly speaking or emails.
Yeah.
Yes, every single one. We've had to contact them to see, are they planning to submit their invoices directly to us? Or are they planning to ask for reimbursement? We have a few peculiar situations that are just going to be handled a little bit differently.
Okay.
But yes, this took an enormous amount of time. I'm not complaining. It has been a fun project to work on.
Mr. McClure informed me that we don't have to go through each one of these to make the motion, but I'll make the motion to approve all, all, all organizations on the list.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the following ARPA agreements per the list on the agenda that's stated here today. Any further discussion?
Nice job.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Health Department. This is an ordinance modifying the Porter County Board of Health fee structure. This is second reading. We heard all of this at the public portion of our meeting, our last meeting. And this is second reading. Good morning, Health Department.
Hi.
Good morning. Before we start, I, I would like to add my voice to those who have already thanked you for your willingness to give up your time and your talent to county government. We are a better place because of that.
Thanks. Thanks. Thanks, Dave.
As we indicated on first reading, this is the product of a rather deep dive the Health Department staff has done into our fee structure. We discovered a couple of things, as I told you last time. Some of these fees haven't changed in 20 years, which is a little embarrassing, but they're now going to change. Some have gone up, some have gone down, and some have stayed the same. So we're confident that we now have a 2022 into the future fee structure that is more tied to the cost of providing the service. And that was our goal.
Any further questions of David or the staff?
And, and this is, I'm sorry, this is Sheila Paul, our administrator. Our department heads are here and Dr. Stamp is, Maria Stamp is here as well, our health officer.
All right. So we, this is on second reading. So alls we need is any further discussion or a motion?
So moved on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an ordinance modifying the Porter County Health, Board of Health fee structure. This is second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
I hope we don't see you for another 10 years.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
911, Debbie Gunn. That's what's up.
Hello.
Morning.
Good morning.
So you got some acoustical panels you want, huh?
Yes.
And low bid, a sound management group?
That's low bid, and I think it's also the best choice as well.
Okay. Any further questions or--
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for sound management group for $9,578 to purchase acoustical soundproofing panels for the dispatch center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Purdue Extension, Anetta. Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is our annual?
Yes, this is our annual.
Okay. Any questions or comments of Anetta?
Any major changes?
No, we, there are not major changes to this contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an, the Purdue Extension contractual services between Purdue University and Porter County Government. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Anetta.
Thank you.
Yep. Take care.
You too.
John Snyder, this is the assessor.
John contacted me, Jeff, he wouldn't be, he was out of town, wouldn't be able to be here.
Okay. It looks like we have some ladies from the office coming forward. Good morning, ladies. So it looks like we have an agreement here for Tax Management Associates, Inc.
Right. They do audits of business personal property. So we have always had an outside firm do our personal property audits. And we used to use TMA and currently have Lenore Group would like to go, but we would like to go back to TMA.
Okay.
Little bit better service and communication and things, so.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for this assessor's office. This is an agreement between the assessors, Porter County, and the Tax Management Associates, Inc. This is a business personal property audit services agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Next up, recycling and waste reduction. Carrie Mars, Baron Director.
I think you skipped.
That's all right.
I was following the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped one.
That's okay.
We'll, we'll come back to Alta after this. I'm sorry, Alta.
That's okay.
We have an employee request to approve continual medical coverage with no time left.
I just have an employee off on medical leave. She actually does have one week left. We've allowed her to keep it because she, treatments will continue when she comes back. So.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That's a motion and a second on employee request to approve continued medical coverage with no time left. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you. Altenary. Sorry, Alta, I switched, told her you were there. I was going too fast. Good morning.
Good morning.
So what do you got here?
My chief deputy is currently sick with cancer. And she has used, as of Thursday will be her last bank PTO days that she can use. And so she's requested to be on FMLA as of December 9th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on employee request to be put on unpaid leave as of December 9th due to illness and treatments. Employee that would have used all their bank PTO days on December 8th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alta.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you, Alta. Next up, Expo Center, Lori Daly. Looks like we got our catering agreements for 2023. Good morning.
Good morning.
So you got, uh, what is it? Aberdeen Manor, Capos, Cronies, Martinis, Master, Nelson's, and Pix.
Correct.
Will there be more coming in later? And then concessions? Can we do all these at once?
You can do both categories together.
Yep. Big D Eats, Dr. Dog LLC, Suzie's Cafe Catering, and Tate's Place.
Motion to approve all the catering agreements and concession agreements for 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Lori.
Can I say something real quick? Can I read something?
Sure, I guess.
I'm going to try to get through it, so give me a minute. In November of 14, I was appointed by the Board of Commissioners, thank you, Laura, in the position of Director of the Expo Center in Fairgrounds. It was right around election time. Commissioner Good had just won the election. And I remember texting him saying, oh crap, you're going to be my boss. However, I'm sure I did not say, oh crap.
You didn't.
Over the last eight years, while you were sometimes a pain in my tush, you were always supportive, not only of me, but more importantly, the expo. You have brought your passion of building and maintaining assets to Porter County Government. Along with the support of many in county leadership, you move this county forward. Your involvement, leadership, and guidance have meant so much to me, and I thank you for that. I hope all Porter County residents know what they did, what you did for our county, while they may not, we all do. And of course, to Tony, or Vicky, you were always there to answer my goofy questions, which there were a lot, to guide me and sometimes to counsel me. You have been a huge asset to the county government, and your worth ethic is unmatched. And we thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, next up, we got the state of the Memorial Opera House with Scott McDonald. He's going to give us a little presentation and report. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to do this. I wanted to start out by saying, you know, we took a look at this year and with the recovery from the global pandemic and all the challenges that we faced, there's been a lot of question, especially among our own staff, as to what exactly we have done this year and how far we have come. Because it has been a very, very challenging year. Kurt's going to be driving, and so we will go through this. So before I jump into this, I do want to make sure to introduce members of our team. And Kurt, that's on the next slide. Of course, you have me. I'm the executive director. Natalie Klobuchar, who is our administrative coordinator. Scott Stretchmiller, the other Scott M., who is our technical director. We're the three full-time employees that you will find there all the time. you will find there all the time. We also have Bobby Sukavachkov, who's our artistic director, Ray Smedley, who is our box office manager and marketing assistant, Vicki Zimmerman, who's our production manager, and Christina Powell, who's our costume shop manager. These folks really make up the core of our team and make sure that the productions get off the ground, oversee contractors, oversee other hourly employees, and do a lot of really, really hard work to make sure that we keep things moving and keep audiences happy. Moving on to the next slide, we also have events and specialty staff. These folks are very, very unique to us because they not only work with us part-time or on a contract basis, they also work several other gigs. Jonathan Owens, who's our Director of Education, also is at Boys and Girls Club and oversees a lot of their programming. Jordan Romersberger works at a couple different places in the community, but she also helps to set up our classroom spaces. She makes sure that students and parents are dealt with in a manner that is, you know, kind and one-on-one. We do have three bartenders that work for us that work kind of all over the map. Eric Thorstad, who is a partner of ours from Opportunity Enterprises, he has served as a custodian for us for 10 years, but we just moved him up into the role of patron ambassador because he has done incredible work that I will talk to as I get into this presentation. And then Madison Marsh, who is our administrative assistant and just kind of looks over contracts and things before we send them to make sure we have Ts crossed, Is dotted, all of that. She also works for Lake County Special Victims Unit. So again, these are a very unique breed of folks that do a lot but are also very, very dedicated to the Opera House. And then we also have the Opera House Foundation, who is incredibly committed. Some of those members are here today. Cliff Bryan is our board chair, Colleen Paluso, our vice, Melissa Osika is our treasurer, Lori Parpart is our secretary, Shannon Franco is our direct past chair. We also have members at large, Marcia Arnold, Mike Kavachkov, Jeff Lewis, Linda Rodenbarger, Debbie Schaefer, and Kristy Weiss, and they have a consultant that does help us out with marketing, the direct support that the foundation provides, and that's Andrew Brent. So, next slide, please, Kurt. So the mission of Memorial Opera House, we sat down a few years ago in strategic planning, and our mission was kind of all over the place and like 14 sentences long. So we wanted to make sure to narrow that down and say that at Memorial Opera House, we use theater and the arts to build our community and create a sense of belonging, and that is something that is very, very important to every single person that I just mentioned, board or staff. And why it matters is, just like other facilities, and Kurt, we can jump to the next slide, thanks, just like other recreational facilities that give the public places to go, to relax their minds, to kind of escape reality, such as parks or the skating rink, the arts provide experiences that only can be captured on stage. And whether that's seeing Mary Poppins take flight, which we did in 2020, or the barricade from Les Misérables literally materializing out of thin air, as we did in 2015, those are things that we can only do on our stage with the folks that I mentioned earlier. The arts provide a haven not only for the audience, but for our volunteers to grow as well. All the people that come through our doors are seeking something, whether that's community, whether that's a place to belong, a place to experience something beyond the everyday hustle and bustle. And many of us on staff and board have been volunteers for a very, very long time. And again, it is never lost on any of us that our building stands proudly as a place of inclusion, a home away from home for many, and a tribute for those who fought valiantly for the freedoms many of us easily take for granted. Again, as we've said, we were closed for 15 months between March 2020 and June of 21 due to COVID-19, and then we had a very, very fast jumpstart at the end of 2021, coming back. So 2022 did allow us this opportunity to sort of step back, reevaluate, reprioritize, and see how we want to keep things moving forward, especially in some times of uncertainty, should something like COVID happen again. So moving into our highlights of 2022. In January, our team, we did sit down, we did some strategic planning, we created what we call a big three, and these are goals that we hoped to achieve over the course of the year and coming years. And things that we discussed included creating some tighter policies, working on our communication with each other, with our contractors, and also preventing burnout, because when we're there long hours, we want to make sure that we can keep things moving forward. We did present Roald Dahl's Matilda the Musical in February and March of '22. Matilda was slated for 2020 but was the only show that was still kind of hanging on there, so we wanted to make sure that our season subscribers were able to complete their packages. And then the Memorial Opera House Foundation and Limelight completed the remainder of the season with many concerts and events, including Echoes of Pompeii, the regional sold-out premiere of a new Elton John tribute band, concerts featuring Big West Big Band, Judy B. Jones the Musical Junior, and currently we are in production for Elf the Musical Junior. Total ticket sales for this year for all events, and this was as of the 1st of December, 8,844 tickets sold and a yielded gross of $217,281 of ticket revenue. And then continuing into 2022, as I said, this does reflect a continued recovery from loss in '20 and '21 due to the previously mentioned closure, but we were able to fill those gaps due to the shuttered venues organization grant. This was a $307,000 grant one time from the feds, and this covered not only all three full-time salaries, but it also covered many of our day-to-day expenses and staff development. We also received a grant from the Indiana Arts Commission in the amount of $9,500. This was the second year in a row that we've received that grant. We've been put on kind of the two-year program of this, and that has allowed us to cover operational costs, including those related to production of shows, concerts, and classes. The foundation held its first gala, Phantoms of the Opera House. This was held at the Porter County Expo Center on October 29th. We had merchants, we had food vendors, we had opportunities for great prizes and raffles and contests. We will be sharing a portion of the proceeds with the Porter County Animal Shelter. We're finalizing what those numbers look like right now, and the hope is to make this an annual Halloween weekend event for adults. They also received $115,000 in individual contributions and donations, and grants from groups including NIPSCO, John W. Anderson Foundation, Porter County Community Foundation. The funds from the Opera House Foundation offset the costs that the Opera House has in marketing, in costumes, in royalties, all of that for shows, and allows us to continue to bring in some of the best experts that we contract to direct shows and lead classes, and really does help with quality programming. The Limelight has really taken off this year, which is incredibly exciting for us. This is our youth theater program. We established a partnership with Boys and Girls Club, and they have graciously allowed us to host our ever-growing classes in their space. Again, this is something that is rent-free to us, and they're very, very kind to us in allowing us to work with their instructors and our instructors to give a wonderful experience for these students. It allows a little bit of relief on our building, because when we have rehearsal lined up, or a concert, or build day, it's like, where do we put the kids? So it allows a safe space for the kids, it allows us to schedule multiple classes at once, and also provides maximum safety for students. We also had a Halloween class this year called Frankenstein Slept Here. We had 20 students involved in that, and they were involved in every aspect of the production, from designing costumes to building sets, to running lights and sound, and it was just really, really a fantastic free event for the community to attend. We also had performances of Raise Your Voice and Judy B. Jones for these students. We saw over 60 students involved in those classes, and there was no cost to them or their families to be involved with those shows. This is important because a lot of local activities, and especially theater programs, do charge anywhere from $80 to $400 a student to be a part of that, and sometimes those aren't upfront. So the kid auditions, and then they're told, "Oh, you have all these fees that you have to pay," and then the kid gets pulled from the show. So if we ever have a family that can't meet those funds, we are always upfront about any of our fees, but if there's a family who comes to us and says, "Look, I just can't do it," Memorial Opera House Foundation does have a scholarship program, and we will make sure that those get covered so those kids have that opportunity to participate. We do have several businesses that we are growing with and that we are partnered with. Family Express is one of them, and Pareja is another. They are neighbors of ours. Family Express donates about $4,000 worth of water a year to us. In turn, we retail that for $2 a bottle. Pareja is incredibly generous to us and helps out with catering for events, or any excellent local restaurant when we have a guest artist in who's a concert saint. Where do I go for dinner? Right across the street. Also, Valpo Inn is one that I'm remiss not to include on here, but he has also provided a great amount of service and rooming for guest artists. We did offer several free events to the community this year. That included our annual Memorial Day concert with the Valpo Community Band. We were very happy to have them back. Frankenstein Slept Here, as I mentioned earlier, and that was in conjunction with Downtown Trick or Treat, and Addicts Wake, which was hosted by Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. We also established a really strong relationship with Valpo Events this year to make sure that we were exposed at events including the farmer's market, Popcorn Fest, Holly Days, and the Art Walk. Sons of the Union Vets of the Civil War, who are the descendants of the founders of the building, the Grand Army of the Republic, they continued meeting in our building and resumed meeting in our building after a two-year hiatus due to safety concerns. They are incredibly grateful for the care that we have taken and what we have done with the space to make sure that they're able to continue meeting there. They are starting to show a little bit of concern due to age with navigating steps, and also, as I found out this morning, they're also growing. They are now accepting members of the Sons of the American Revolution, and so their group is expanding, so we're looking for other places for them to meet so they can continue to be in our building, whether that be the stage, whether that be the East Lounge, or if we need to take a look at the building next door, figure something out that we can continue that partnership. Next slide, please. And we continue to prioritize all of our skills and professional development opportunities. Ray Smedley, who's our box office manager, has been taking developmental courses, and she's doing an excellent job to make sure that we're developing solid relationships with all the restaurants and businesses in town. I've also been working on my own continuing education through the Indiana University School of Philanthropy. That is a mouthful. I completed the Certified Fundraising Manager coursework, and this is due in part to Porter County Community Foundation, making sure that that was able to be managed with time and funding, and several other community leaders were involved in those courses. I also continue work with Northwest Indiana Urban League as a facilitator for their diversity and inclusion training, working with such groups as Purdue Northwest, their athletic and nursing departments, Centaur Bank, the YMCA of Lake County, and People's Bank. I was also honored to be the emcee of Diversity and Inclusion Awards Ceremony in October. And then the American Association of Community Theater is something that when I came in in 2014, we discovered them, and they are invaluable. Their mantra is helping theaters thrive, helping community theaters thrive. They've been an incredible resource to our staff with various roundtables, conferences, master classes, and webinars. They also offer continuing education credits for our staff, so it's also a resume builder, and I began a three-year term as a board member with their national board this year, and I look forward to continuing my work with them. I serve currently on their finance and development committees. So moving into 2023, as we move toward that, we've launched a full season of shows. Again, we have five shows that we are very excited to be presenting. In one week of subscription sales, and again, this was as of December 1st, we generated $20,000 in ticket sales. I looked this morning, we're closer to $30,000 now. Our projection is somewhere in the ballpark of about $80,000 in season subscriptions by February 15th, which is two weeks before Lucky Stiff, our first show of the season opens. These funds are, we're moving them over to the county as fast as we possibly can as they come in. That will also help us get a really nice jumpstart on 2023 with operational costs. We also have several new programs and opportunities for all members of our community to participate in the arts, and the one that I am very excited about is on the next slide here, and this is called The Penguin Project, and I've talked about this a little bit here before. I'd like to take a moment and discuss it now, too. In March of 2023, we'll be launching the very first chapter in Indiana of The Penguin Project. It's an all-inclusive program that allows students that would typically be unable to participate or invisible due to physical and mental limitations to be center stage. We partnered with the Boys and Girls Club again, and Opportunity Enterprises, to offer a safe and stable environment for the performers and mentors to thrive during rehearsals. We'll be presenting Andy the Musical, the junior edition, for one weekend in September. The Penguin Project is free to all students wishing to participate as either artists or peer mentors for those artists. We began sort of an education tour of this this year. We spoke at Noon Kuanis, we spoke with the Valpo Creative Council and OE. Eric Thorstad, who I mentioned earlier, has been working very diligently, actually, contacting local schools, finding out if they're K through 12, if they're K through 5, do they offer special education services, and really curating all of that information for us, and he's really been an excellent ambassador for the theater in this. And then, next slide. We are also partnering up with Opportunity Enterprises and the Simply Amazing Market to offer concessions now at performances and concerts. We've begun an exploration of audio descriptive services for those that are vision impaired and want to participate as patrons. So this is, I am visually impaired, I walk into the theater, and a docent begins explaining to me immediately through a headset what I'm seeing and what I'm seeing on stage, and we are looking at help from Valparaiso High School's speech and debate students to be those docents. So really, really excited about that. We're also exploring some sensory-friendly performances for all of our mainstage productions. It allows integration of those, again, with mental and physical limitations, and opportunity to see productions with the house lights at a dim level as opposed to just off, quieter sound effects and reduced lighting effects. And we also had a donor that stepped forward and created kits that include a weighted blanket, fidget items, earmuffs, sunglasses, anything that somebody with sensory needs might have to be comfortable in the theater so that they can enjoy performances, and they can sign those right out in the box office, and we have those available to them. We have had several questions about weddings already for 2023, what we're planning on doing there. Some people are looking for ceremony only, which is great, but if they come to us, one of the first questions we say is, "What are you looking at for your reception?" And oftentimes, we say, "You know what? We want to make sure we highlight the option of the Expo Center." So again, all boats rise there. Upcoming events, again, we've, Memorial Opera House Foundation has several events on their books for 2023. We look forward to hosting several returning artists, including the Megabeadles, Echoes of Pompeii, Cashbox Kings, and Lil Ed, Willie Nile, and the Atlantic City Boys. I'm especially excited about the Willie Nile concert slated for June. The person who is hosting this is hosting as a fundraiser with Project ALS, and we really want to find a way to find some research to eradicate this horrible debilitating disease. And then with the addition of Thursday night performances now, we are also going to continue our Theater for a New Audience program that we've been doing since 2014, but we'll be integrating it into the events of opening night. On average, we see about 100 people come from groups like Opportunity Enterprises, Housing Opportunities, Gabriel's Horn, The Caring Place, several others, and we're happy to offer them tickets free of charge to our opening night so that they can be a part of all of the theatrical experience. As well, we're looking at our second and third Thursdays possibly as industry nights, focusing on different members of the community, so things like educators, first responders, healthcare professionals, anybody that we can celebrate, and we're sort of working out all of the cogs and wheels of that right now. So in conclusion, we are all looking very forward to 2023 and a very exciting return to being incredibly busy doing what we do best, which is providing quality artistic experiences for the community at a reasonable cost. Our operating budget is funded through ticket sales, and although the cost of everything has gone up, we are determined not to raise the price of season subscription sales. We haven't done that in the 10 years that I've been overseeing our season subscription drive, and we have no intention of ever raising those prices. We consistently go above and beyond with limited time and resources to make sure that all that come through our building leave having had a great experience. And again, always happy to discuss the arts and entertainment as how it truly affects quality of life and all residents of Porter County. As we're all aware, the arts play an important role in engaging citizens and civic discourse, providing forums for important issues, and encouraging collective problem-solving, and I look forward to many more opportunities to serving this community through the arts. And if I can answer any questions, I'm happy to.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, thank you. I think that was a really good, a good update for the year. Thank you. Thank you. Any other further questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. Thank you. Next up, we have the IT Department. Lee Childress. Morning, Lee.
Good morning, sir.
Can we do these transfers together? I mean, we can, I know I always ask, but we can do one and two together. I think we can, and I know I always ask, but we can do one and two together, so. What do you got?
Transferring out of two different funds so I could finish up paying maintenance contracts for this year.
Motion to approve. Second. We have a motion and a second, and that's on Items 1 and 2. So any further discussion? Did you have a question, Jim?
No, I just.
Okay, I didn't know it. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. And then you have a request to increase a part-time employee salary from $15 an hour to 18.
Right now, she's making, excuse me, $13 an hour because I have a cap at 13. I want to raise that cap to 18, but pay her 15.
What were we approved in the budgets?
I think, I did not realize it was set at 13, so the budget's carried over at 13.
Okay.
Well, I don't have a problem with this, but I think that it's appropriate that you get, you go in front of the council and get their blessing.
Which I'll do tonight.
Okay.
Oh, okay, okay. All right.
So we, motion to approve?
Yeah. And that would be contingent upon council approval, right? So, all right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And then we have three quotes for a new, the old in-house phone system.
Yeah. I do want to clarify, the agenda says this is for a new in-house phone system. This would be cloud-based.
Okay, that's why the numbers are so.
The numbers from NITCO are pretty much in line to what we pay right now.
And what's that term on that?
They're giving us 60 months on that term.
Five years.
Lee, explain real quick what, explain real quick what, what this will do compared to what we're not getting right now.
Sure. Really what happens is, you know, in the last two years, we've experienced all sorts of issues with our telephone system. It's a lot of IT's fault, one, we're just not specialists in telephinate. Secondly, the upkeep to replace the equipment on a regular basis, we didn't do because it was expensive, and everything all of a sudden just started snowballing and falling apart. If we go to an outside company, they maintain all the equipment, they keep all the software up to date, they pay all the licensing fees, and we just pay one flat rate every month. We still have the ability to log in and control all the telephones, we do all the programming and that, but they maintain the equipment.
Well, assuming that we take the lowest proposal here, you have it within your budget to address?
I would need to discuss that with you guys because right now you pay the phone bill. If the council is willing to help me with my budget, I'm more than happy to cover the bill. I do not have it within right now.
Well, we got it approved in the council. This is not really changing the amount.
Yeah, if we go with the lowest one, we're not going to really notice the change.
Right.
So is the price going up?
It should not with option 1, with NITCO's.
Okay. And I'd like to remind everybody, too, on this phone system, we've been filing, we've been fighting out-of-sequence software for seven years up here. We've been patching, patching, trying to get it going, and it, we just, it finally ended. So, and we've been, we had a lot of issues this last year with incoming calls from the outside people, and that's not a good thing. So we need to get this shored up. So I'll make the motion for NITCO, $12,377, 20 a month.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Highway Department, Jim Polarek. Morning, Jim.
Good morning. Good morning.
So first up, we're just seeking bids for 23 supplies?
Correct. They'll be advertised the end of this week, I believe it's on the 8th or the 9th.
Okay.
And then bids are due and to be opened at your first meeting in January, and then we'll review them and come back at the next meeting and award them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for seeking bids for 2023 Highway Department supplies. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. And let's go over your transfers. We're going to vote on those together, but why don't you go over those with us?
Everybody knows prices have went up on everything, including tires, so we need to get some new tires on snowplows. And then the second one, we need some more money in vehicle repair. We just got one bill back from having the transmission fixed on one of our mower tractors, and it was $20,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for two requests to transfer funds as per the outlined on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Next up, Development Stormwater Management, Bob Thompson, Director. Hey, Bob.
Morning.
How you doing?
Good.
Oh, Chelsea too, huh? We get you twice today, don't we? Yeah?
Good. I asked Chelsea to come up.
Yeah.
Just quickly, I heard everybody say, you know, the $30 million in capital improvements, I got the thinking back there how much we've been doing in, as far as bridges and stormwater. And we're probably at 35 to 40 million, either in completed projects or projects that will be going forward with design and in construction, so, I mean, this past eight years, we've done a lot, so thank you.
At a pretty good pace.
Yes, a very good pace, so thank you. Really appreciate it. And one more, I realize I can be a pain in the rear.
See, they're all coming back now, Vicki.
But thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
So. Yep. So what we got up here now is we got a rezone map. This is a rezone from IN Institutional District. Now, again, institutional district is not industrial. Institutional is schools. So this, I always make sure I say this because people get upset because they think it's industrial, and it's not industrial, it's institutional, which is the new designation for schools.
Correct.
I wish they would just keep it schools, but we're not going to do that, so. And that's to R1, Low Density Single Family Residential District. The petitioner is the Living Water Ministry Corporation, and this would be a rezone. We will have to hear in a public hearing. So Bob, is there anything that you and staff want to add to this before I close it up and go to the public portion?
Yes, just real quickly, this is Plan Commission Resolution 22-03. The Plan Commission forwarded this up to the commissioners with a favorable recommendation at their September 28th meeting with a unanimous vote.
Thanks, Bob. So what we're going to do here is we're going to pause the commissioner's meeting, we're going to open up another public hearing, we're going to, three in favor, three not in favor, and then we'll close up the meeting, and then we'll, we'll take our temperature here on the first reading. So first call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this rezone? Second call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this rezone? Third and final call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this rezone? First call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Second call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Third and final call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? And with that, public hearing is now closed. I'll throw it to the board for action.
Motion to approve on first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second on first reading for a rezone map from IN Institutional District to R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District. The petitioner is Living Water Ministry Corporation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Second reading will be heard on the first meeting of January. Next up, subdivision, a subdivisions control, what do you got going here?
This is an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance and subdivision control procedures, and this particular one is with the administrative subdivision. What we're doing is just, very simply, we're clarifying.
Yeah.
The existing code says plat a survey, and we have too many people that come in and want to say, alls I have to do is survey. No, we're going to make a recorded plat so that way the auditor has it, the assessor has it, and everything like that. So we have cleaned up the language, plus our stormwater code requires them to go through some procedures with, you know, just to make sure that there's going to be no impact with stormwater. It's a very simple procedure to the administrative and the process with the stormwater code. So we're just adding, clarifying this language. This was before the Plan Commission at their October 26th, 26th meeting, excuse me. It was forwarded to the commissioners with a favorable recommendation, and again, it was a unanimous vote to support.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for subdivisions control. I can personally testify that that, that portion of that is very confusing, and we've had a lot of arm wrestling matches over that, and it's just a point of clarification is all it is, but that's not clarified. So I think this is long overdue. It's long overdue.
Quickly, this is an ordinance, it should be first reading, correct?
I didn't open it up on a public hearing, but let's open it up and do the first reading, okay?
Okay, sorry.
When I was looking at that, I was like, okay, thank you. We're going to close, we're going to pause the commissioner's meeting, open up a public hearing now. And this public hearing is on the Porter County Redevelopment and Stormwater Management Board making a revision to the ordinance.
To the ordinance, yes.
Regarding subdivisions control. It's a control, it's, it's a document that the owner has to supply prior to submitting for development.
Correct.
So that's what this is. First call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this ordinance revision? Second call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this revision? Third call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this revision? First call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of the revision? Second call, anybody wish to come forward to speak in favor of this revision? Third and final call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this, in favor of this revision? And with that, the public hearing is now closed, and now we can throw it to the board for action.
Motion to approve on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for subdivisions control, petitioner of Porter County's, the petitioner being Porter County Stormwater Development, for a revision to their ordinance on subdivision controls. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Second reading will be the first meeting of January as well. And then we have a design services agreement with HWC Engineering for Small Structures at Meridian over Damon Run and North Brummett Road over Arm 19 of the Little Cal. I'm sure that has to do with the work being done by the school up there and all that? Is that what that's for? Or is that another job?
This is another one. A few months back, I brought forward to the commissioners the report that was done by United.
Right.
And that was over the small structures that we had them inspect from our agreement, where it was like 30 small structures between eight feet to, up to 20 feet. Four of those structures needed attention immediately for being replaced. So HWC Engineering, we're going to ask them to do the Meridian Road structure, which is over Damon Run, and also the North Brummett Road, which is over Arm 19 of the Little Cal River. We're going to be bringing another agreement in front to the commissioners in January, and DLZ is, we're in discussions with DLZ on that particular agreement. That's for the other two structures that we were told by United we need to get on immediately. So this addresses two of those four structures that need attention now for replacement.
Any further questions, Bob?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for design services agreement with HWC Engineering for Small Structures at Meridian Road over Damon Run and North Brummett Road over Arm 19 of the Little Cal River. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries.
Bob, how is the, real quick, how is the work coming along with the bridge next to Brummett Elementary?
It's, right now, it's on schedule, I would say, and it's still going to be slow because of the winter coming up. We just, they poured one of the piers just recently, and the big thing is, is trying to get through that road with the settlement. I mean, we were really hoping to, if the utilities had come in and relocated, we would have been done about this time, but because of the utilities and everybody's experiencing this, they're setting us way behind, so we're probably not going to be done with this project until June. So I mean, the big thing is.
It's in time for school to be out, huh?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. But they are pouring right now, they just poured one of the recent piers and everything, but the big thing we have to get through with is the winter and the settling of that road or getting that road prepared since we're moving it somewhat.
Making it clear is that we couldn't do anything until the utilities were moved.
Correct. Correct.
We're at their mercy.
Yes, exactly, and that's pretty much with any bridge project we start up, we're at the mercy of utilities.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next up, last up, we have Porter County Right to Life. This is Albert Raffin.
No, I'm not.
Okay, well, this is on here, I'm reading.
Yeah, he's working.
Hi, Pat, how you doing?
Thank you for your service, sir.
Well, thank you. We have a request to use the northeast and northwest corner of the courthouse grounds Saturday, January 14th, 2023, from 11:30 to 1:30 for a Right to Life prayer vigil. They will have a six-by-three banner that has the name of the organization, two small tables, and a small system to amplify the sound.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Porter County Right to Life to use the fairground, the courthouse grounds as noted on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Hope you stay warm.
Yep.
You're all hiding.
Yeah, okay. And with that, we're at the end of our meeting.
I'd like to add real quick, we do have some cake if anybody would like to stay after to celebrate Jeff and Vicki's service, and thank you all for coming. I know several of you are here for that.
So anybody wishing to address this board, and then we'll dismiss. Yeah, come on forward.
Jerry Gold, 277 Derness Court, Valpo. And Commissioner's staff and fellow citizens, as we wrap up this year, and as a citizen of Porter County, I would like to recognize the contributions you have made to Porter County to make it a great place to live, work, and play. Mr. Good, thank you for your service on this commission, and we wish you well in your future endeavors. Ms. Blaney, thank you for your contributions. Porter County staff, thank you for your hard work and dedication as public service to keep this commission on track. Mr. Biggs, I especially want to thank you for your advocacy for all Porter County citizens. When I reflect back on my Air Force career, the basic tenets of integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all you do, you live by that motto. You set an example of how the commissioners should approach the challenges that our community faces. Whether it's advocating for the heirloom neighborhood residents being a responsible steward of public funds, being considered for the Memorial Opera House, or insisting on sound justification and responsible distribution of pandemic relief funds, you are hereby recognized by the citizens of Porter County for outstanding public service. Please accept this plaque for our gratitude and your dedication to our service.
Thank you. Hey, anybody else? Come on forward. Oh, we got someone coming here, just.
Hey, I wanted to, it's Penny Kuzmic, High Street, Valparaiso, Indiana. I wanted to give a shout out to Jim about the roads in Porter County. About the middle of November, we were driving back from visiting the other side of the state near Fort Wayne, and they had lake effect snow that was coming, just, I mean, almost the whole drive. And the roads were terrible, I mean, the summer, everybody's going about 30 mile an hour, and we're talking a three-hour drive. Well, it was still snowing, but when we got to the border of Porter County, the roads were completely clear, and it wasn't because there wasn't snow. We just had a really fantastic, you know, road system, you know, that they're out there plowing and salting, and we didn't see a single snowplow in the other two. out there plowing and salting. We didn't see a single snowplow in the other two hours coming through. So, I just wanted to say, we're doing something right here. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Ruth Vance from Center Township. I too would like to thank you for all your service this past year. I served as a citizen representative on the ARPA Subcommittee for nonprofits and small employers this year, and I thank you for that opportunity to serve. I learned a lot about the wonderful nonprofits and small employers we have serving our community, and I think we're truly blessed by them. And I just wanted to mention something about process, though. Our county government put a process in place for the orderly and fair allocation of the ARPA funds. And the Memorial Opera House did not apply to the Subcommittee that I was on, which they should have, because that's nonprofit, for funding. And yet somehow, I'm surprised to find out that it received by far the largest amount of funding. And I realize that that's up to the Commissioners and the County Council, but the subcommittees do make recommendations. My problem was that the Memorial Opera House did not follow the process, did not apply. And so, your process, as good as it was, was circumvented. And when government bodies do not follow their own processes, citizens lose trust in their government.
Hello, good morning, Dawn Miller, Valparaiso. Just wanted to come up. On November 1st, Mike Justin and Sylvia Graham came before you regarding the different accomplishments they agreed on, such as raises and stipends, which is great. Mike Justin brought up the fact that there was limited input on the Memorial Opera House and such, while one reason for that would be Commissioners' meetings are all held at 10:00 a.m. It's kinda hard to get time off for work. He also brought up that the fact that the Memorial Opera House has been in top for years. Well, this money is for us, not for a building. We had to endure lockdowns, masking, force shots, to receive this ARPA funding. Then Sylvia stated they made a compromise and not heard one person or company complain about the reduction they would be receiving. Well, obviously, no business or any person is going to complain when they're receiving money, which again, is our money. If the county never received any ARPA funds, how do you plan, or how did you plan on doing this lavish upgrade to this building? If this project is so important for our community, why hasn't anything been done before the $33 million in ARPA funds became available? It's obvious because this is a money grab at our expense. Why haven't you held fundraisers? I mean, if you have a foundation, plenty of opportunities to do that. I find it convenient that after Commissioner Blaney asked for $7.5 million in the form of a bond from the hospital foundation, and was told no, that all of a sudden, $10 million of revenue replacement fund, just came up. Interesting timing on that. Jeff, you stated that the Memorial Opera House is as important as the Expo Center. Can you tell us how many people visit the Expo Center? How about how many people attend the Memorial Opera House? I'm sure you don't have an answer for either of these questions, but as any Porter County resident knows, the Expo Center has and will always attract many more people than the Memorial Opera House ever has or will. And as I have stated over and over again, this is reckless spending, and you know it. I will continue to pray for all of you, because it's not me you need to worry about or answer to at some point. It's Jesus Christ. Have a great day.
Anybody else?
My name is Maria Bries, and I'm responsible for giving you, giving you a copy of notice of intent for a certi-bond claim to Valparaiso City Mayor. And so, I wanted to, a statement from you, what's your position, because this adversely county residents, county roadways as well. Did you not have an opportunity to read it or see it, or?
I'm not clear on what you're speaking of, ma'am.
So, I sent you a certified copy that I've made a certi-bond claim to the mayor, Matt Murphy, and all council members, that we have once, twice, third, and fourth time adverse effects on Yellowstone Road.
Now, it's coming back to me, yes.
So, once was violation of allowing businesses to do what they were prohibited from doing without violation or anything. Twice was Public Works disusing it as a cut-through. And then, Nate McKinley just pulled our signs. We have a regulation, no through trucks. Third, the city municipal trucks use our roadway to Howe Street, which is a rural county roadway, as a cut-through to get to the waste compo site. And abusive, this was abusive. This would start at 7:00 a.m. throughout the day, all day long, massive trucks back and forth. And then, fourth was heard in a Public Works meeting documented August, sometime in August or September, that they designated our roadway to be an off-road arterial for all of their public vehicles, all of them. So, we object to that. We've sent petitions, all signed from Yellowstone Road and Howe Street. We've sent letters, we've sent complaints, we've done anything. So, now I'm to the point of a certi-bond claim. So, I wanna know what your position is, since it's also affecting your residents, your roadways, as being county.
Well, I have not received any complaints. I'm not speaking for the other two Commissioners. I have not received any complaints from any other residents out there of the issues that you're speaking about. And if I'm clear on what you're referring to, it's all going on inside the incorporated boundaries of the city of Valparaiso, correct?
No. Howe Street is county residence.
I have not received any complaints.
Well, the complaints have always gone to the city, because it's the municipal city whose abuses and actions, course of conduct, have all been from the city. So, it's always been directed to the city, to which he's refusing to comply with the certi-bond information, or one or two reasons. He wants to drop the ball on your lap. A certi-bond is you need to protect the residents and represent the citizens. I have a petition of all those. I've already told them. Like I said, this has been repeated four times. The public policy to make our roadway change the demographics of our street is unacceptable. You've endangered our citizens, small children, everything.
Your concern is, is that they're using, they're running their municipal vehicles over those roads?
Our concern is, is that you changed, you pulled out the signs of a regulation that existed for many years, no through trucks. This little six-point-mile roadway, Yellowstone Road, is not adequately designed for such use. They're using it...
That's, this portion of road that you're speaking of, is that a county road? Is that the port, or is that municipal?
I guess it would be municipal. I don't know. There's county residents on it, and there's, and there's both.
I understand your concern, but it's very likely that the portion of the road that you're speaking of is in the city of Valparaiso. And this board, and any other board within county...
So, the residents on Howe do not have municipal services, so therefore, they're county. Exactly, right? So, that falls in your lap, does it not?
Well, those municipal vehicles have a right to use our roads, as long as nothing's under a frost law, if it's a heavy load, such as a truck. Again, you know, I haven't received any complaint from anyone out there. You stated that you have a petition. I'm kind of surprised...
I have numerous petitions, and I've also told the city I can get more, I can quantify it if you'd like, to the surrounding streets on Park Avenue, on George Street, Howe, and then the next street, that the whole section was just made as a thoroughfare for their convenience, not for a need, not for a need.
If they jerked the signs off the right away of that road, it's their road. They would not be doing that to our road. They know better. So, what I...
So, who's responsible for putting up signs on Howe Street after the complaint was made?
If the city pulled the sign on Howe Street, that portion of Howe Street is in the incorporated area.
No. Who put up the signs?
Well, I would likely, if the city pulled it, they're the ones who put it up. They would not pull a county sign. The problem you have is this road goes from county to city to county to city.
And so do the residents, and the residents need to be represented.
You gonna let me finish?
Yes.
You sure?
Yes.
Because that's what's going on here. We have this all over the city. We have places where we go in, and it's county road, then it's city road, then it's county road. And what this gets down to is that improper annexations and growth that's going on, everybody wants to take the ground, but nobody wants to take the roads. And that's what we got here. And you're on the border of a city and a county, and several roads come in and out, and it's almost a no-win situation for anybody here. And really, what would solve your problem is if this one government took all of that infrastructure out there and took it over and ran it. But when it comes up to here and it stops, and it goes to that road, and it's on, and then it turns and it stops, how do you manage something like that? It's almost impossible. And this all started off of Yellowstone and your road, and that's where a lot of this complaining started. It was a city thing, and then it started morphing over into the county. So, I just really don't know what all we can do out there. We'll try to limit as much traffic as we can, but, you know, the roads aren't restricted from that perspective.
So, preceding this, the reason why they took the signs out saying, "We own the street." But nevertheless, preceding this, I sent you a certified letter in addition, asking you to be partaking, and I want it ordained in citation, a citation. I want an ordinance for this.
Well, as long as the ownership is set up the way, what I'm trying to tell you, ma'am, is by the way the ownership of the roads in that area is set up, it's gonna be very difficult to come to an agreement with who does what, because you have two different institutions that own, government entities that own those roads. So, there would have to be some type of meeting, something would have to come together, but, you know... And our ordinances...
None of this has inspired you to have some type of meeting?
Our ordinances do not, are not enforceable within the incorporated areas of the county. We can pass all the ordinances we want up here, but if they apply to incorporated areas, they're not law. Now, when it comes to roads. Now, I see your, I understand your, after the meeting, we'll talk. I'll reach out to somebody on the side of the city of Valpo, find out why they took the signs down, and if there's any chance to put them back up, I'll, you know, hopefully, they'll share that with me, and I can share it with you. But nobody's ignoring you up here. It's just that we don't have the authority within the incorporated area.
For a citation, I think you do have the authority for, to it to be adjudicated in Porter County law, the amounts, everything, all that. I think you do have the authority.
Well, that's, that's past my pay grade. I don't have any idea what you're speaking of, and I've been at this a while. And anything that we can do, anything that we could vote up here in the way of roads does not, the city of Valparaiso does not have to comply to. They have their own inventory, just as we do.
So, your statement is that it's not our responsibility?
No, what I'm saying is, I have found over the years that they're pretty reasonable people over there to deal with. So, I'll speak to you after the meeting. I will reach out to the city engineer's office, and then let's go from there, okay? We don't need to get attorneys involved. We don't need, you know, this other stuff.
No, we've had an action for a long time, and this is the only way to...
Well, I, yeah, I can't promise you anything, because I don't have the authority to force them to do anything over there. I'm just saying that I can at least get you an answer. Okay?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
My name's Barbara Domer, and I reside on Yellowstone Road in Valparaiso. And as you know, Yellowstone Road is a .6-mile residential roadway on the western edge of the city of Valparaiso. Properties on the east side of Yellowstone and south of approximately the 600 block are within Valparaiso city limits, but the properties on the northwest side of the street, beginning at approximately the 600 block, are located outside the city limits and unincorporated Valparaiso. Residents and property owners have petitioned the mayor and city council of Valparaiso to reinstate the no-through-truck regulation, which was identified by street signage located at both ends of the .6-mile stretch of roadway. We believe this regulation was issued at a time when Yellowstone Road was a county road outside of the city of Valparaiso jurisdiction. Yellowstone Road and the immediate surrounding community is overburdened with the negative impact directly from heavy vehicles, specifically city public work vehicles, who use Yellowstone Road as a truck route through the residential area and surrounding area of Howe Street, which is unincorporated Valparaiso, as a shortcut through town and to the transfer station compost site located at 2150 Lincoln Way. It is our belief that heavy truck traffic, which is not servicing the homeowners of Yellowstone Road, is causing an increased risk to the safety of residents and pedestrians, increased emissions, noise pollution, and excessive wear and tear on the road. Ninety-nine percent of the residents and property owners on Yellowstone Road have signed a petition to reinstate the no-through-truck regulation. We do not believe the road was constructed to support heavy vehicle traffic. We are asking the county the following. Provide the details when and why the no-through-truck regulation was issued, and publicly support and partner with the residents in our efforts to have the city of Valparaiso reinstate the no-through-truck regulation. Can we depend on county leadership to join our efforts with the goal of preserving the nature and character of this community? The safety, health, and well-being of our community comprised of municipal and county property owners is counting on your support. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? And with that, this board is adjourned. I adjourned, see? I did that one right.